...for Granite School District since about 268 days now, I want to say. So since July, late July of last year. And, but I've been with Granite School District for almost 17 years now in different roles and capacities. So, happy to be with you. Here's the rest of our board. Karen Linder, Kim Chandler, Nicole McDermott, Chris Wen, and Julie went to Chick-fil-A? Okay, so Julie's not here. And sorry to excuse myself, thank you. So there's a couple of folks here. Just wanted to make introductions to. We have our principal here at Granger High School. Not all of you are from Granger High. This is kind of a West Side central meeting point. So, but he's hosting us this evening. He's also a newly appointed assistant superintendent. And Granite School District will be filling that role starting next year, starting July. And then I see Senator Dan Thatcher with us here tonight as well. He serves this area and really more now this way, right?
Oh, yeah, they took most of West Valley with free districting.
Yeah, and no more Tooele, but it goes straight south to...
You know, almost all of Tooele. It's fine. Without a map, you can't tell. I can't describe it to you, it's too insane.
I can't even remember. It's been a while. So, this is an hour-long meeting. It's just a chance for us as taxpayers slash patrons slash superintendent, board members to hear, get your questions answered, to address outstanding concerns, a couple of ground rules or norms, as it were. I don't want to talk about individual kids or circumstances. I have to adhere to federal privacy laws and I can't talk about individual circumstances. I have to do that offline. So if there's an individual concern with respect to a student, let's make sure we have that conversation, but we do it in a private place so that we don't violate anybody's privacy. Todd Popple just walked in. He's our business administrator, essentially our CFO as well. So I put some slides together. I have seven slides. I don't have a presentation. I just wanted to bring them in case you had questions about them. So this meeting is yours and we can just start off and ask questions. What do you got for me today? Okay, great. Right back here.
Okay, so I'm here with many members of the Arcadia PTA, Arcadia Elementary, as well as the community council, Arcadia. We have some questions about funding right now because we have noticed that our aides are now being fired at the end of the school year. We are struggling where our parents are not able to cover the gaps. There are multiple problems going on because we do not have the support systems in place. Our land trust funds are not being based off of how many students we actually have. You guys are projecting things that are lower and are never making up the difference. So our aides are getting time cut. We are drowning. We don't have the resources we need. We're losing teachers and aides at the end of the school year. We're, it's, we're all very, very frustrated.
Okay, I wrote down three things that I get. I just want to make sure I cover them. Is that fair enough? Did you want to add to that list?
This was with the aides, I guess, two aides that have been let go, I guess, essentially. But they're working for free right now.
They're essentially volunteering. Julie Jackson, who I remember walked in.
Yes, our aides and board getting paid are now volunteering because they cannot let the school just fail.
Yeah. So, I did get this question across my email and I looked into it a little bit further. I'm still getting some additional information, but this is what I know right now. They got the same amount of funding as every other school in terms of aides and pairs, but it appears there was a bookkeeping error at the school level where they were not making the appropriate contributions to retirements, which meaning they're having to go back and back pay to the state.
That is an HR issue with the Granite School District for your guys' mistake and now you're pulling it out of our school funds.
Okay, so with due respect, that's not a decision that's made at the district level. That's a bookkeeping error made by the school itself. They're the ones responsible for the land trust districts don't have any or heal their land trust funds. So it's, there is some guidance that's provided by our accounting department and payroll department in terms of making those appropriate accommodations. I'm trying to figure out how to solve the problem, right, besides just a total funding loss right now. But as you can see from some of our other projections, and I'm happy to discuss the district's picture as a whole, right now, the short-term plan is to try to save as much money to make those back payments school-level because it is a school decision. So, again, if this was a district problem, we would have seen this at other schools, right? But we haven't seen that issue.
We have to fly it through the district. Also, the back pay is not nearly as much as they would be getting upfront with just getting aid to work.
Sure, and with respect, I barely have scratched the surface. That's what I just heard with respect to my initial inquiry on the problem. I'm awaiting additional information. So I'm happy to follow up with you as soon as I have more information and details on what that looks like, what the total cost is and what the remedy is at this point in time. That's the para issue, right? Let's talk about projections, okay? So as a school district as a whole, we're a declining enrollment district, right? So we continue to see enrollment declines because frankly, you guys aren't having nearly as many kids as you used to, okay? The other factor with...
I see, I see.
You need to go to your department.
Private schools being built. Huge number of enrollments.
Yeah, we do have an increase in charter schools in the area and they are certainly drawing students away from Granite School District. But if you look at our population as a whole, this is data from an independent demographic firm called MGT. It's called Davis Demographics. They've done our last previous five-year projection. They won't project further than five years because it gets pretty cloudy in terms of that projection after that. So we've gone back now that it's been five years. Their previous projection was pretty much spot-on. So we felt pretty good about recontracting with them to determine what the next five years looks like. And they're projecting that we will be down to 47,000 students by 2029. You can see right now, we're in this period of place, then, starting next fall, we expect to be in the 5,300 range. We're going to lose another 1,200 and some on students, 12,000 to 1,400 students, about 2%. So if you look at our overall projections, how our process works for staffing schools in the fall has been a process where we use a fall staffing adjustment, okay? So what that means is come the fall, we actually look at your enrollment, right? We project in the spring that the school hires, right? And then come the fall, if they're higher or lower, we have typically subsidized those teachers. If they're lower than their actual amount, unless they're significantly lower than what they were projected to be, right? And then we have to remove those teachers. For instance, at one of our elementary schools in the Magna area, we have to move three teachers because some of the growth and development did not occur. Can I finish the...
Yes.
Okay, because I promise I'm going to answer the question.
Well, I'm more, yes, okay, I just find the projections are off.
Okay, I'm getting there. I promise. And I want to make sure we answer your question. So if I don't answer your question, you can slap me at that point, okay? We'll make sure we answer your question. So with respect to that, typically, our projection and our process has been, we make a projection, we hold schools harmless in the fall if they're a little bit lower, if they're a lot bit lower, then we have to move those teachers after the October 1 count, okay? So that's a statewide count and then it helps with an average daily membership throughout the year. Generally, we're funded from the previous year's amount of students, right? And so we can kind of work with that projection a little bit easier. We also had federal ESER funds that helped us to subsidize schools that had higher projections than actual enrollment. So we could subsidize those smaller class sizes, but that's not necessarily equitable either, right? So in conjunction with our teachers' union, we came up with a better process to eliminate the false staffing adjustment because it's not great for kids to have their teacher ripped out from underneath them after you've been in the school year for six weeks, seven weeks, right? That's not good for kids, it's not good for teachers. Invariably, one of those teachers I was just telling you about eventually just quit because they were so traumatized by the situation and losing their kid and having to go to their kids and go to a new school. So it's just not a situation that works out very well. With declining enrollment, our projections have typically been off by about 2% district-wide. When you think about that as a school, it's anywhere between a quarter FTE or a quarter of a teacher or a half of a teacher, depending on those circumstances, okay? So that doesn't seem like a lot, but when you take it district-wide, that means we end up subsidizing anywhere between 20 to 40 teachers. There's no more ESER federal funding that we can rely on to kind of help work through that situation anymore, right? And in addition to that, we don't have resources like other school districts do. I call Anthony Godfrey over at Jordan School District. His board has given him a million dollars just on the side to make any staffing adjustments and subsidizes necessary. Rick Robbins up in Canyon, same thing, there's some sort of process. Most other school districts are just learning to project better. So I've got Todd, who has a master's degree and he's super smart, knows how to do funny things with spreadsheets, right? Building an air codes and kind of look historically at how far we've been off. What we find is our more seasoned veteran principals do a better job of projecting, right? Than our newer principals, right? And so typically, again, we've been about 2% off. So we have been very conservative on this front end so that next fall, we don't have to move and replace teachers. We can simply add them if the projection is off. And we can do that starting in day one. If our kindergarten enrollment at, I don't know, Arcadia Elementary is higher than we have projected, we'll immediately in July, when we see those numbers start to come in, be able to post and hire a new teacher at that point in time instead of waiting till October 1, which is the current process. And that happens. William Penn Elementary up in the Milk Creek area had 42 kids and a kindergarten class. And we had to wait under our old process till October 1 to shift all the teachers around to meet that need. With this new process, because we've held back and made sure we've been conservative with the resources we have, we'll immediately be able to remedy and hire the teachers based on the actual numbers. And guess what? In the past, if your projection started here, but halfway through the year, you ended up with 40 more kids. Does that happen on occasion? Yeah, under the previous process or the current process, you didn't get more teachers. Now, because we're being very conservative on the front end, we'll have that resource to be able to plug into a school that sees a surge for whatever reason throughout the school year. So that is how we came to the projection process. Did I answer your question or am I going to get slapped?
So you've got the projection going, you know, based off of your enrollment trends, but the actual population of Utah is growing, not as much in Salt Lake County as it is in Utah County, I understand, but...
Pretty much everywhere but Salt Lake County, right? Except for that southwest end.
It's still growing though.
It is.
So it may not be due to birth rate, but it's happening because of migration. So we still see these enrollment trends dropping. Why? They're going to charter schools, private schools, things like that. So why are they going to those? And I can tell you, declining test scores. They're comparing those test scores because we're teaching us to test instead of, you know, actual good curriculum that those other schools are teaching to and parents aren't.
Okay, which school?
Well, pull up Arcadia's test scores.
No, they're struggling and they're in CSI and we're working to provide some additional resources. But traditionally speaking, our schools are outperforming all of our charter competition. Let me pull up another example for you.
Go ahead.
A lot of it is how the aides are testing the students.
Why don't you want to pull up Arcadia's?
Because I know they're struggling. We're going to be providing some additional resources next year.
Are you going to be providing... So my main issue is that the aides have been cut. I understand the teachers and the surplus, but my concern is you're projecting less than we always have. We always end up about four or 15 students and you're saying three something. But that means our land trust funds are not meeting the needs of our students every year because your projections are under, so our aides are under.
Okay, here is Ascend Academy with an apples-to-apples comparison in West Valley. It's not performing, outperforming its neighborhood schools. It's outperforming some other schools that have a light population. It's outperforming Empios, Rolling Meadows, which is down the street from it. You can see orange, their proficiency is slightly higher than the 22%. Actually, Jim Bridger is outperforming it. Rolling Meadows is outperforming it. Lincoln Elementary is outperforming it. So the orange is bad for Ascend Academy. And I guarantee if you look at this data comparison tool for just about any of the charter schools in West Valley or within Granite School District, you'll see that the neighborhood, apples-to-apples comparison, right? In terms of socioeconomic and demographics, they're not outperforming our schools.
Arcadia is getting outperformed.
Yes, it is, and we're going to be...
I am believing in your state.
That's why I want to know, so what is going to be done? I know for two months straight, so I sit on that community council and my wife's heavily involved in PTA, what's being done other than shadowing teachers, trying to come up with, you know, plans? The first school's getting swapped out. You know, I know some things are changing.
Absolutely.
But nothing's getting transmitted to the parents.
Yeah.
So we're going in line without getting any answers. You know, and we've got people literally pulling their kids out next year because it's not going to help anything. And it's not helping anything because you guys aren't communicating.
Okay, that's a valid point. And I'd be happy to make sure that we're communicating in terms of... We're calling, we're taking our average, our lowest schools. Now I'm a new superintendent, so I apologize. I'm trying to figure some things out to make sure that we're providing those resources.
I'm finding all this information in a bad way and I've got two kids at that school.
Yeah.
Well, just like she was saying, you guys project less than 400 students fit. My, our son's been there since first grade. He'll be in fifth grade next year. We've had 420-plus students since our kids have gone there. So the projection is getting, is way up compared to what we're actually getting.
At an elementary, the hard part to project is the kindergarten, right? A lot of people don't know, they don't show up until they show up, right?
It is, but guaranteed, like, I've been doing like the, for example, since my first year on PTA birthday bags for students. So I have to have the exact amount for every student. Now, my first year on there, we had 420 students. We projected, I give or take, because you always have students move in throughout the year. I think I did like 430 or 40? We ended up giving all of them away by the end of the year because the students didn't move in. So we're getting more students than what it...
That's exactly right. Your mobility rate continues. Mobility is how many, what percentage of students are moving in and out at any given time.
We're getting more in than is leaving at CSI.
So if that is in fact the case, are you going to get those teachers as soon as we know that the actual amount of students? And the answer is yes, and I don't have to wait until October 1 with our new projection system. So as soon as we see those kindergarten enrollments start to climb higher than we're projecting, again, it's a conservative estimate for a reason, right? We don't want to give you a resource and then have to pull it away.
Well, we get more land trust funds because our numbers are higher than projected.
Correct, but that projection has nothing to do with your current land trust projection. Land trust projections, my understanding, go from the previous year's number, is that correct, Todd?
Then it should still be...
So the, yeah, the land trust...
It's never going to be based on a projection. It's always going to be based on an actual...
I thought it was asking me and I was about to confirm, yes.
So land trust is based on forecasts that the legislature has already done and then they're trued up when we get to the October 1 counts.
Right. Whatever your enrollment is on that October 1 date is how your land trust would be funded.
For the following year?
Has nothing to do with that projection.
For that year, for the year you're in.
That is only used for our basis to hire teachers.
Can I, can I just add one thing?
Please.
There is a big challenge that a superintendent will never actually be able to deal with, okay? And yes, it's easy to throw bombs at the legislature, especially when we...
And we do have plenty today.
But one of the big challenges, as you talked about people moving schools, is I saw frequently where a student would not be performing well in a charter school. And sometimes you can move from a charter to a different charter if it's not fitting your kid. But more often what you see is that they end up settling into the district school because the district school is walking, typically is within walking distance. A district school tends to collect or gather, would you say, at least a dozen kids?
Prior to the change in state law and how the funding mechanism worked, we actually tracked several hundred students coming back into our schools after the October 1 count because they used to be able to retain the funding.
With no WPU and with no additional compensation... I'm sorry, yes, the way the pupil unit, Utah likes to pride ourselves on, we're the most equitable funding distribution in the nation, and it's actually true. But that's like being the tallest building in Tooele, okay? We do have the most equitable funding distribution, but it doesn't take into consideration Title I. It doesn't take into consideration English language learners. It doesn't take into consideration poverty. And so I just, I want to say, I'm here not to support you or be your cheerleader. You know, maybe I can take a couple of shots on your behalf. But also, you've been in the job less than a year. The fact that you already have a plan in place to address the October 10th cliff, I don't know if you guys have a better name for it.
It's a good reason.
I appreciate you being here and I appreciate you listening and I appreciate you taking responsibility. But I also feel like you at least deserve for these people to know that you are dealing with systemic decades-long challenges plus an unprecedented unpredictability from state leadership. And you're doing it all on the fly nine months in. So I'm glad you're here. Sorry to interrupt. I just, while you're sitting there graciously taking lumps, I just think it's important that people know what you can and cannot do and what you're dealing with and how much you're already under fire.
And I think the idea behind our strategy is to try to limit the impact to our schools and our students. At the end of the day, the heart of our decision-making on that process is going to be, what is going to be the least impact to our kids, right? So that projection, I want to be clear, you asked a great question, is not tied to some of the state funding. And that's all based on that October 1 count and the ADM, which is called the Average Daily Membership after that, okay? So they're taking into account many considerations and then we get the funding from the state in and through that process. But you're right, we do need to fix this aides and para issue and until I know more information about how that went down, I really can't solve it. Let me get back to the question and concern about a failing school because that's really important to me too. So in the past, we've simply relied on what we call a school leadership improvement director to kind of coach and support instructional quality within a school. And we have changed that. We now have what's called a student achievement leadership team in Granite School District. And that is every district-level director and those directors will oversee the schools. And we are taking, we literally just met again yesterday to finalize how we're going to identify our most struggling schools. And the idea is that we will take that three-year average of proficiency with those particular schools. We'll identify which schools need additional support. We bring in the professional development. District directors, not just the supervisor, are out in those schools on a regular basis. And the whole goal is to improve tier-one quality instruction. That's, when we say tier-one instruction, that's the first and foremost instruction that they get, right? Because sometimes teachers are coming into a classroom situation. Sometimes it's bad habits. Sometimes it's teaching not the core standards that are required, that they're going to actually get on the test.
They didn't even know how to develop a lesson.
And sometimes they, it's just poor instruction altogether. So they will be required as part of this boost school program. It's going to be 10 elementaries, two junior highs, and two high schools. And we'll continue to run that three-year average on lowest proficiency. And the idea is if we could build the capacity of those teachers in those schools... Now, they might be identified as part of federal identification or state turnaround, but either way, we're saying no more. You don't get to fall into this status anymore. So the idea is to track and identify those schools before they fall into some sort of targeted category from state or federal identification and make sure that we're boosting those schools to appropriate levels of proficiency.
How are we paying for it? When we floated the idea of collaboration with the teachers, it was basically kicked back at us saying, well, nobody's going to pay for it. How are we going to pay for those teachers to be able to collaborate and get that extra...
They are given collaboration time already and paid through the contract on Fridays. And we are in negotiation right now with the association to look at additional planning time to make sure those PLCs, the planning, the collaboration is solid. But what you're talking about is often a cultural problem within the school itself. A systemic problem and sometimes it's just collective efficacy. What I mean by that is sometimes teachers will go, those kids can't learn. And it's not my fault. These kids can't do this or that. And it's never a kid problem, I'll tell you that, right? So our efforts will be to build culture, build collective efficacy, and support those teachers with appropriate professional development. And if they're not getting on board, then I have the authority to move them.
And how are we going to communicate that to the rest of the school, the parents and...
So we're kind of finalizing this process and that's why it really hasn't been communicated, right? But he's a member of SALT and he knows that we do need to communicate that and that's absolutely valid feedback and I appreciate you bringing that up. Let's come here and then we'll come back around.
Mr. Orthing, what percent of the fourth graders...
This guy, we've been friends forever.
Forever. I don't feel comfortable calling Ben, does he?
I've sat in this room, what was that, 2016, 20... It was probably 2008 on the first bond, I think you were here. There were like three people here wanting to know why we were raising your taxes to build this building or to do this or that, right? So thanks for being here.
What percent of fourth graders cannot read at grade level? And why are we passing them down, 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 down? I know the old story, we can't, the legislature won't let us. And he has attempts been made to get some kind of a program that keeps kids behind or in a special setting so they can learn to read.
Yeah, and that's been a statewide effort, not just in Granite School District, right? So SB 127 was passed, I think, two years ago. And it's a K through 3 reading intervention. There's special funding and programming that comes to make sure... And you will see as part of SALT and our efforts is if kids don't know how to read by, at grade level, by grade 3, they're really just in deep trouble the rest of... So I'm looking over here at my high school principal, why is your graduation rate this or that? And the answer is, well, seven years ago when they were in elementary school, they didn't get the instructional help support that they needed. So really, we're focusing more on our instructional quality at the elementary level under my administration to make sure that kids have the ability and the supports that they need in order to be successful moving down the way.
Why are we setting them on the fifth grade or the sixth grade?
Typically, there's another bill from 20, I want to say it was like 2019 or 2018, SB 122. And the number doesn't matter, right? If I was the old superintendent, I'd just make up a section of code because he was really good at that. I'd throw out a number, 53G dash 4. I'm pretty sure it was 2017 or 2018. But SB 122 is a parental rights bill and that allowed a parent to continue to either ask for their student to move forward or to be held back. And then depending on the circumstances, we will do that in conjunction with the parent's request. The challenge and the difficulty is really when you get to the secondary level because we don't want to be retaining a paralegal senior, a 20-year-old individual around 14 and 15-year-old kids. So it gets a little bit awkward in the...
You know, we have people not graduating, aging out of the 12th grade who are functionally illiterate.
Sure, and I want you to know that I actually teach in this school. This morning, I was here teaching a court government class to know and understand, to learn more about collective efficacy, make sure that I'm knowing and understanding the circumstances that our teachers are faced with. And obviously, poverty has a high correlation to student outcomes, right? And we look at some of the data that people look at in terms of school quality and it's usually tied to some factor of socioeconomic status, right? And in reality, the highest factor in a student's outcome has nothing to do with the school. It has everything to do with you guys as parents, right? The second factor is teachers.
We have so many, so many people in that category that only have one parent at home.
Yeah, or both parents or...
Or a grandparent at home.
Correct.
Really interesting. And they aren't going to get it.
Absolutely.
So we have to do something different.
We do, and when a student does get moved on, it's usually because they demonstrated some sort of proficiency and we want to build on what they do know. Let me give you an example. Granite School District, there's about 75,000, 80,000 refugee families here in the state of Utah, right? They come from everywhere, from Venezuela, Afghanistan, Iraq. I have a student in my class who is from Afghanistan and she speaks only Arabic, okay? So what do you think her reading proficiency is like? Okay, but I want you to know she's getting an A in my class. You want to know why? I have on my PowerPoint presentation Arabic translation. I take all my assignments and I translate them into Arabic. She's able to take all of her tests and at the same time, she's still required to go through, what's our state, UIDA, UIDA testing and provide continued growth in terms of English proficiency. But I'm not going to stick that child who's smart and knows how to pass the class and take a test and know the content just because she doesn't know... and take a test and know the content just because she doesn't know English very well and move her back to third grade, which is really where her English skills are at, right? So that's happening. We serve probably two-thirds of those eighty thousand families here in Granite School District. They settle in places like South Salt Lake and parts of Murrayland we serve here in West Valley. And some of those families are coming here with no formal education. Are we gonna put a kid who's fourteen years old, who's at a second grade level in terms of our American standards, in a seven-year-old, well, twenty-seven-year-old? No, we're gonna provide the necessary interventions and support to get them up to speed as soon as possible. And that's why you see a school like Ranger High School that's actually performing quite well in terms of growth. We talked about two different types of ways to measure success. And even that state website that I just showed you with the data comparison, it has growth and it has proficiency. Proficiency is what we primarily talk about in terms of school success. What type of proficiency do those kids have, right? Are they ninety percent proficient? What does proficiency really mean? If I'm in twelfth grade and forty-eight percent of the kids are proficient in language arts, English, right? What that really means is their readiness for college, right? And not all of our kids are going to go to college. And we shouldn't expect that all of our kids are gonna go to college. Because I was at Silencer Company out here today with our CTE folks looking to expand an intern program with a manufacturing job that starts at fifty thousand dollars right out of high school and leads into a career that will make six figures within a five-year period. That's a really good option for many of our kids. So being proficient in certain areas doesn't necessarily guarantee lifelong skills and success. So our focus as a Board of Education and as a school district is to make sure that those kids, we want them to be proficient, absolutely. But we also want them to be prepared to go get the life skills necessary to be able to get jobs and be successful and productive citizens who then can pay taxes to be able to fund the next generation of kids, right? So the other component of the state's system in terms of measuring is that growth component, right? Because Mr. Howe, I'm sure he's an amazing teacher when you taught, you taught sixth grade way back when, okay? If you're dealing with a lower-income population whose families don't necessarily have the ability to read with a kid every night, right? They might not have the ability to help them with their math assignments every night. But the teacher's amazing, but those kids are only at twenty percent proficiency. They might have eighty percent growth. And when a teacher has an MGP or a growth percentile of eighty percent plus, that's an amazing teacher, even if their proficiency is only at twenty percent. Because what that's telling us is that eighty-plus percent of their students are getting a full year's worth of growth or more, right? So I can take a student, I think a lot of us look at every school year as like a five-k race, right? And we gotta run that three-point-one miles. How many of you like to run? Nobody? I don't either, it's the worst thing ever, right? But when you, we all think that all those kids are starting on the starting line, right? And they're just gonna run those three-point-one miles and that's a full year's worth of growth. I get to the finish line and yay, I passed third grade, right? But the reality is, is if I'm impoverished, I'm probably actually not starting at the starting line. I'm probably actually going back a mile or two, sometimes ten miles or more, and I'm starting back here. And then there's some kids who, usually from higher economic circumstances, who, I mean, if you take an average impoverished kid, their average words going into kindergarten is six hundred and middle-class or higher is twenty-five hundred. Is that because the kids are dumber? No, it's because they haven't been given the opportunity within that home. So I might be from that higher home and I might actually already be on the four-mile mark and have finished that five-k, year's worth of growth. And the idea is that whether I start here or whether I start all the way over here, that every kid gets at least a full year's worth of growth every year and has the ability to go even more. And a good quality teacher doesn't just get one year's worth of growth out of a refugee kid who's only lived in a refugee camp their whole lives. They're getting two, three years' worth of growth, right? And then those kids eventually are gonna catch up. So it doesn't do me any good to take my friend Wale, who's a twelfth grader, and put her back with the fourth graders because she's very intelligent. She just doesn't speak English. So we're helping her to learn English, but at the same time, I'm giving her the education that she needs right here and helping her to grow even more, if that makes sense. So that's a very good question, I'm glad you brought that up. Sir?
I'm just a residential homeowner and so, first of all, I wanna say, thank God Granite School District's been here to educate me and my two children who have both moved on to double degrees and I don't even.
Where did they graduate from?
Granite.
Which high?
Taylorsville.
Taylorsville, awesome. You got some Taylorsville love in there.
I went from Cottonwood, you know what I mean? That's, you know, it's first-class out of it. And I'm very successful in life. It was Granite School District that gave us that foundation. So when people are beating it up, I think that somehow we need to realize that Granite is one of the best damn schools out. And that's not just bias, it comes from experience of seeing that. I was an office technician, I've seen a lot of private, the private schools. And we got twelve-year, fourteen, fifteen-year-old kids running around playing tic-tac-toe all day long in the classrooms. Now, I don't know if it's changed, but those are in those private, what do you call them?
Charter schools.
Charter schools. And all they're doing is, you know, I don't, there's no way that kid could have gotten a high school education.
Sure, and I wanna be clear. While we feel confident that by and large ninety-plus percent of our schools are outperforming the neighborhood charter schools, it doesn't mean that some of our schools don't need to be improved, right? Enhanced. So not all charter schools are bad, I wanna be clear.
Right, and I'm not, I'm just saying, from some of the things I've seen out there, I was concerned that they're gonna get a degree or a diploma and they really were just pals, you know? And now, like I said, that was twenty-five years ago I seen these charters. Okay, so I don't know what they've done different. But the second point I'd like to make, so on our taxes, we have our Granite tax schools debt for our property. But then there's a charter, does that charter belong to Granite? Because Grants used to have these, like the charter program for the kids that are just failing completely.
Right. So there's a couple of different items and they changed it, I wanna say, since twenty-twenty-one, whenever they consolidated the levies. And before that, there was, so we have a statewide basic levy, Todd, I'm looking at you.
Yep.
And that goes into the flexible allocation, is that right?
The basic levy goes into funding the minimum school program.
Okay, and we have our own Granite piece. There's, how much is that divided into?
So you have two operating levies, the voted and the board local levy.
What was the second one, sir?
Board, local.
Yeah, local. Okay, thanks, I could remember the term. So these fund us, there's that basic that goes into a state fund. And this is basically an equalization piece. So what happens is, because charter schools do not collect property tax revenue and they lose out on that piece of the revenue. Back in nineteen ninety-eight, a long, long time ago, okay? When charter schools were first implemented, the vision and the dream was that they could do it for cheaper. They could be more creative, they would have less regulation and they'd be able to do things. Well, they keep clamoring for more and more of the regular funding and yet their performance is not.
They're not credit.
They're not necessarily outperforming. There's about five to ten charter schools that are really just killing it statewide. And they have a model, but they're also cherry-picking.
Yeah.
The best and the brightest kid, I mean, they're tracking, I mean, good for them, right? There's a reason Skyline's the number-one traditional high school in the state of Utah. Fifty-plus percent of its kid come from, out of the area and they wanna be part of a tradition there, right? And so success breeds success. But the rest of those other charter schools are pretty much performing just what you'd expect based on their socioeconomics and their demographics, just like your traditional neighborhood public schools.
Well, that extra charter tax on there is private sector taking money out of my private.
So charter schools are publicly funded, they're not considered private schools.
So you're tapped to compete with the charter.
We do.
Now, one last question and I'll.
Let me just say something real quick about this basic levy. So this goes into a general fund and then is allocated based on our per pupil basis as well. But the idea is that charter schools don't have a ability to collect property tax revenue and it's a way for them to make up that difference.
So the last question I got, and I hope I don't get murdered for this one, is that with the hack and slash on the federal DOE, does that bother you guys? Does that, does that hurt you guys or not? Because they keep saying it doesn't, but it sounds like they definitely destroy your special needs kids programs.
So there's a couple pieces to this and the real answer is, I'm just being honest with you, I don't know.
Nobody knows.
Yeah, nobody really knows. What we do know is that the primary source for funding, and Todd's gonna be over there and correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't come through the department. It's not funded by the Department of Education, it's funded through separate legislation. So Title I funding, which is impoverished school funding, special education funding, a lot of these come through ESEA, IDEA, and some of these other federal congressional legislative pieces. Those are not going away, right? So the money does sometimes get filtered through the Department of Education and then passed down to the State Board of Education that then allocates it back to us, right? So my primary concern, roughly twenty, twenty-five percent of our budget is federally funded?
More thirteen, fourteen percent.
How much is that school lunch?
Probably a third of it.
Okay.
I think it's only about eight percent if you take away school lunch.
Yeah. So my primary concern is, that's a huge, that's a huge loss of revenue. So I don't see the elimination of the Department of Education as a loss of funding.
You thought it hurt too bad.
Right, the thing that a lot of our special needs families are concerned about with the loss of the Department of Education is the Office of Civil Rights that provides protections for kids. If you feel like your child's being mistreated, is not receiving the special education services that they need or deserve as required by federal law, their only remuneration or ability to appeal that is to go through the State Board and eventually through the state, the federal Department of Education. And then there's what's called the Office of Civil Rights and they send out attorneys and they investigate things. So that whole thing that happened in Davis where they were under an OCR investigation, the Office of Civil Rights and came and put sanctions on them. And now we have campaigns about everybody's welcome here, over there in the Davis School District. That's where my kids attend, right? So I've just seen this from the peripherally. They've had to kind of jump through some hoops to make sure that they're abiding by the federal agreements. Otherwise, they would potentially lose their federal funds. So with the loss of the Department of Education, if that were to go away, a lot of that oversight and regulation of those regulations and making sure that Congress's intent involving those special education requirements, that would go away. So that's why a lot of our special education families are a little bit fearful of that.
Is that a way for your PR department to put the message out on this lunch program? For kids, free lunch for kids? That that might be the only damn meal they get? Because I've got a lot of serving, we won't go any further than that, that are really irritated that we're spending money for free lunches for kids. And when I tell them, look, that might be the only meal that kid get? Because if he's coming from a home where the parents are both alcoholics and he's, haven't come to school, he hasn't had lunch or breakfast or anything and it's proven that these are helping their performance because they've got some food in their belly. I mean, I don't know what you guys is all thoughts on this, Art, but if that's the only meal that kid's gonna get and we're complaining because we gotta give a free lunch to somebody?
How about breakfast without full-fledged bread?
Yeah, I mean, that's what, you guys are smart, see? Because you're giving that kid nutrients and now he's gonna do well in school. But there's a lot of conservative people out there, they're so close-minded on giving away like welfare, if you wanna call that. They don't understand that that kid is in a tough spot coming into your, into your school.
So I have a couple of thoughts on this and I'll just share them briefly. At a macro level, at a high level, sometimes I feel that schools are overburdened, that we're asked to do too many things, right? And there's all these requirements, and even the state, lest their hearts, they keep throwing more. There was over a hundred new requirements in the last two years on public schools in terms of new regulation, just the last two lists that are sessions, right? So it's funny because they cry administrative costs. Not Daniel Thatcher over here, I'm not, I'm talking about all the.
I vote no on everything.
They'll cry on one hand administrative costs, but then give us more regulation that we have, and hoops we have to jump through. That I have to hire somebody to be able to monitor this or check off that, right? So at a macro level, I go, oh, I can't handle this. Like, that's not conservatism or whatever, right? Schools should not be doing all of these things. But then at a micro level, when I'm looking at a hungry kid in the eyes and I know that they can't learn if they're starving, then I look at that situation a little bit differently, right? And so on one hand, I'm like, we shouldn't be doing this. I see a lot of waste in some of these federal programs in particular. But on the other hand, when I look at the day-to-day impact, there's a balance in there somewhere, right?
He's saving you money by feeding you because now he's not gonna be behaving incorrectly in class.
That's the idea.
So the whole goal was to get him through.
Yeah.
Because he was starving.
And that's not the kid's fault, they didn't give him the opportunities. No, absolutely.
We helped out one time when you created this little, I won't make it long back then. We created a little program for special needs teacher called Who Killed the Cookie? And we had a microscope, you had to look at the three, like salt, sugar, and baking soda and make a little symbol of it. Now, these are kids who were having trouble spelling and writing, right? And then at the end, they had to determine which one of the ingredients was incorrectly put in the cookie to kill it. And those kids sucked that down like, and these were kids who, one kid wrote his, when he would write a word, he stacked the letters all on top of each other. You know, so these were kids with horrible learning, I mean, just, they were the kids that weren't good to do good in the right place. But yet, they sucked in on it. So I just was wondering if there's, you know, if maybe with the groups that are just not gonna make it, like you say, gonna make it out of the system with some kind of education? I'm wondering if there's a way, and I know, you're talking to just a normal person with all your degrees and everything, if there's a way to create these kind of programs that would light them. And once they get lit, then you're gonna, they're gonna.
I think, and I think the broader answer is, we need to partner with other entities within our communities to provide the whole service to families. So schools aren't burdened with some of these roles and responsibilities, but there are other services and our schools really come back to being that community center. And we partner with a number of organizations that can come in and provide some of those additional types of supports. So the burden isn't on just educators, right? And I will tell you, the teacher that I've taken over her class here at Ranger, she has a bin full of granola bars and fruit snacks and other things and she pulls it out every morning and the kids, these are high school kids and they're hungry.
And is that funded by the school?
It's not.
So she's had this thing out of her.
Yeah.
But still.
That's a problem. Let's come here real quick, here, and then we're gonna swing over this way.
I'm sorry if you feel I've been attacking you. I am very pro-public education. I have six kids. My oldest is a freshman at USU, she graduated from Taylorsville. I have a son that's gonna be a senior at Taylorsville. I have a child at Benyon, I have three kids at Arcadia. We're going through the system, I've seen this happening for years, so I've watched the trends. But like you were saying, our school, Arcadia and it feeds into Benyon and it feeds into Taylorsville, we're struggling because you do have the socioeconomic problem. You have single-parent families, you have parents that are working so much that they don't have time to care about their kid's education. They're just trying to eat, right? You have kids that are not speaking English and like, I love the teachers at Arcadia. Most of them are my friends, they're in my neighborhood, I have known them for decades. And they are doing the best they can and they are well-trained, but they have kids that their class doesn't speak English. It's very, very hard for them to teach to those kids. It's not like your high schools do, who can read Arabic, right? You have kids who are not reading, so they can't, they have to go.
I was at Arcadia just the other day with the multi-language learning specialist who had two kids that she was teaching that pulled aside out of class and was working through some basic alphabet and sight words with. And these are older kids, right?
Right, but see, what happens when you don't have the space?
Yeah.
And that is the problem.
She's a woman that's volunteering chapter per day for free right now.
Yeah. And I'm, as soon as I can figure out how to, as soon as I know what the exact problem is, I look forward to trying to resolve it.
Yeah, because the parents are right now, people are pulling their kids.
Yeah.
Because.
My sister-in-law lives in that community, her kids go to Arcadia, so.
Right, and so I just.
Believe me, I'm here to, we don't feel attacked, by the way. I'm glad you're here and I'm glad that we get to talk about this.
I just.
Just that calling and converting thing now. Are they using that a lot in the school?
I will use it sometimes to converse with her directly.
But I mean, are the teachers being able to use that with all the students?
They are, but, so you have students who are, a lot of Spanish-speaking students, but then you also have student deaf students in our area. So you have teachers that are trying to teach to all these different demographics.
There's two of that.
The thing is, I think our teachers are great.
And by the way, the state doesn't provide additional apparatus funding for multi-language learners. They passed one bill this last session and the funding mechanism is in a way that will help Granite School District schools. It will help a school that sees a surge in population from like two to seven kids. And we're already at twenty thousand multi-language learners in Granite.
And you have teachers who like, you can't train, that's it. You can't give them more education, they are just, you're piling things on top of them. The legislature is asking them to do more, but not paying them. The legislature is asking them to do more, but not paying them anymore. And they're, and they are struggling and they are getting burnt out.
You got a teacher behind you who's also on the Board of Education, who's not here. Let me just say this with respect to that, when we're talking about our Who's Schools initiative, this is not intended to be punitive, this is intended to say, be out in those classrooms and see what type of help and support those teachers need, right? And then making sure that the district is providing the resources. The thing that, uh, that's important to me is that our, our district administrators and our district staff know that the district exists to support schools and that the schools don't exist to support the district. We are here because Arcadia exists, so let's go make sure that Arcadia is being successful. And so that's the whole approach behind SALT and this new, this new school initiative. Here and then here, we gotta get all the way down the road and we're running out of time.
Oh, mine was just related to the, the comment, do you, so, I'm just wondering, are we just taking money out of like the pool of funds for educating students to feed them to?
No, the federal school lunch program is a federal initiative and the kids either qualify for that or they don't. There was a bill that was passed this last legislative session though that will potentially burden Granite School District moving forward inordinately. And the intent is good, it's to take away all the reduced lunch kids and make them free lunch kids, but that financial burden only came with some one-time funding from the state. So invariably, where is that gonna be funded by? The local school district, and if 60-plus percent of your kids are already on free reduced lunch like they are here in Granite School District, that's going to impact Granite School District taxpayers a little bit differently than Willamette District, Canyon School District, Davis School District, or the 20%.
What do we do about that?
I'm looking at my legislators.
Does the Granite School District have a, or summer food for the children?
That's all federally reimbursed as well. So you're paying for it, Granite School District is not paying for that, we're reimbursed for that program. I'm looking at my business guide. So your taxpayer dollars that you fund for us, don't go to fund that. Okay, right here, real quick?
Um, how many teachers from Arcadia went to that learning thing in Las Vegas?
I have no idea. We're talking about the PLC conference. So we had a professional learning collaboration conference that was held in Las Vegas a few years ago. We used federal lesser funds, it was approved by the State Board of Education. Yes, they stayed at a hotel that cost $200 a night, which is actually a pretty swinging deal in Las Vegas.
It is, but if, I mean, in, in the article, you had said that what, what the teachers had learned there helped at one school. Was the 86 grand?
We had those 14 schools.
14 schools that participated. And that conference was actually held here this last summer and we sent a bunch more teachers here. We didn't have to pay for the hotel.
Did, did the districts, or did the country know that the, that COVID money was not gonna be a forever thing? Because I, I do think it's ridiculous that 86 grand, when we're already nothing. Having trouble with money now.
Let me put it this way, if, if, if your boss comes to you and says, I'm going to give you this money, but you can only spend it on these five things, and one of them can't be salaries ongoing, because that's one-time money, right? You don't want to fund an ongoing expense with one-time money. What's the best deal for that money? It's to do the, one thing we could do with your money was improve HVAC systems in schools? We did that, to the extent that we could, but guess what? We just put in air conditioning in all of our schools with the 2,000 night bond, so most of those systems were already up to date, right? So the next thing we can do is improve our teacher quality and their professional development. And then that was the nearest conference and the cheapest conference. The next, nearest option was Kansas City, which that flight would have been a whole heck of a lot more.
Could those teachers who went maybe come and help the other teachers in the district?
Yeah, but you, you need to understand the content that they were learning. They were learning about PLCs, which our friend here was talking about collaboration time. And so the conference is actually intended to work with grade-level teams within a school and not, and actually teach them how to collaborate and learn how to work together to improve student outcomes. Uh, check for understandings, um, the whole process of sharing instructional design and building lesson plans together and evaluating data. So the, the concept is, it'd be great if we were all third-grade teachers at Arcadia and one of us went to the conference, but the other two of us would not really have caught the vision, the, the, the best practices for all three of us to go, do the training together and then go, okay, this is how we're gonna function together as a team moving forward.
What was there a way that that could be figured out to make that money be able to be...
And I will tell you, when that money was, was allocated, we looked at just bringing the provider to Granite School District and doing it for more teachers and we, we couldn't do it, we couldn't schedule them. So our next best option was to...
Go to them.
Correct it.
And I understand that, but I just...
And we had another, we had another 600 educators this last summer in July at the SALT Palace Convention Center for the same exact conference, it just happened to be here this year.
36 for Granger.
Yep, including some from Granger.
36 of them.
Very good. And please know, I, I don't love the, the optics of sending a teacher to Caesar's Palace, but that was the, I'm not gonna put him at Motel 6 in Las Vegas.
I mean, I mean, I've heard that.
They did Motel 6.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, it's like, so, we're, 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 we're... We found out at the last year teacher conferences that they're testing, these, they, they go out in the hallway and, and here's why I'm, I don't like it. He's a kindergartner, he's gonna get distracted, as with any, most young kids that age. But if he gets a thing wrong, it goes against his testing and it goes against everything for him. If he gets distracted.
He'll get a zero.
Yeah.
On something he masters.
Yeah.
And that goes on his test.
Right.
And it's stupid.
And he doesn't get to redo it.
No.
Mr. Horstley?
No, you're talking about state accountability systems, right? And, and Ryan says, let me tell you, I'm not a fan.
Staff paraeducator, because those are the ones that are doing these tests.
They're the ones doing the interventions and...
Which is, why? They're, they're the ones doing the test and they're the ones being...
That's not always the model, right?
Why, why is the district paying for it?
I'd love to talk to you more about this. Let's get through some more questions, we'll share contact information and, and we can talk more about this, real quick.
Okay, well, I'm actually...
And the reason I'm sensitive to your time is we actually have to get back into negotiations and as a Board of Education and discuss some more things and I'm, I don't want to keep you here longer. I'll leave my contact information, we can perpetuate any additional questions that don't get answered, all right?
Yeah, well, I'm a retired...
That's like a tour time interrupted you, I apologize.
I'm a retired early childhood teacher, 35 years, plus the last eight years I've been working for my school. Um, and I feel I'm an expert in early childhood moment. And it kind of goes along with all of you that are saying, um, we're doing it wrong, to be honest. Um, I want you just to think about when you feel so overwhelmed or that you don't get it yet, it's, it's not it. How good are you at learning something?
Well, no, I shut down, right, those kids do.
So kids shut down or their behavior goes wrong.
Absolutely.
Okay, everybody agrees with that and yet this is what we do. Okay, you can probably, because you guys are there, okay, in the paras or with the class, they go this, then they go to this, then they go to this, then they go to this. If you don't get it, you go to this, and this, and this, those kids are shut down. They're not learning anything more. In early childhood, all the early childhood teachers that I know, and I know a lot of them, they are so frustrated because it is not developmentally appropriate. Kids need time to do, they need time to explore, they need to move their bodies. They are not made to go from this to this to this. It's like you are giving them a job. You are sitting here for eight hours, you know, well, I guess it's six hours straight. Maybe you get a recess, although if your behavior's bad, most of those kids have to stay in for recess.
Should be doing that.
And they're getting nothing.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're shutting down. So you're talking about your grades, you know, you're all about the scores, all about the testing. And yet, I'll tell you, when my kids were in seventh grade and stuff and I, I went, because one of my kids blew a, I think, very bright student that he was, he got a D. And I made him take summer school and do that class plus another class. And they told him flat out, oh, it doesn't even count until... Okay, well, school doesn't count, why are we stressing these kids out so much? My grandkids are so stressed out, they cannot perform anymore. In church, I'll just tell you, two months ago, in the middle of church and stuff, they had a prayer and stuff that, um, she gives the sacrament meeting, this little 11-year-old prays that they aren't so stressed at school. Now, that's sad.
It is sad.
And if you ask anybody that their, um, mental health is going up in the younger and younger kids. And we're providing that to them, in my opinion. I think we're really, you know, so, when you said you're stressed, you're not learning. You want our scores to go up? Let's give them exploration when they're little. You add to it as they get older. You don't start kindergarten, I thought, oh, all day, they're gonna have structured play, learn how to play together, because kids can't play together anymore. You know, they don't go out and play kickball anymore, they don't do any of this stuff. Why aren't we having structure where they can learn to cooperate? Where they learn and they get this and they go, oh, I'm interested in this, I'm... No, this is what you are interested in. And I'm sorry, I'm still in the schools, don't tell me that Granite doesn't do that, because we do. And all of the programs are this.
And, and...
And why can't we change it?
We can't. And, and there has to be a culture of less compliance, because compliance breeds mediocrity. Okay? And it has to be a compliance of making sure we're working in the best interest of kids. And that, and that comes through quality instructional practice. A good teacher is going to take the content and present it in a way, in a fashion that meets and differentiates each of the student's needs. If you were all in my class here and I'm providing that instruction, um, and I'm not doing it in a way, uh... They're feeling that stress from the teacher, right?
Because that teacher, some teachers, and I know this is the principals, I don't know what they did in some of it, but there's many principals, but I, I said, I know a lot of teachers and a lot of principals. They're telling the teachers, if your kids don't make this, your, like, job is on the line. How stressful do you think that is for them?
Sure, and, and, and to be honest...
So they build it on the kids.
Where's that pressure coming from?
As I said, why are we letting that happen?
The state accountability system, right? Because if we don't show proficiency and growth and rise, then our, then our families feel like our schools are failing.
Okay, can I ask, okay, if you can't do anything, can't you have like, you know, a life school?
Oh, oh, I can do that.
Okay, all right, well, why...
Culture of compliance breeds mediocrity.
Because I guarantee, if you kind of put on where the kids are ready for it and you give them the background and you give them what they're just trained in to learn and find out. My kids, when I taught and stuff, they all made big progress, but some of them, they're the one year...
So I want to attract and retain the highest quality educators that know how to do that.
And, and that's true, because, because I also teach teachers, they're not all there. They, they aren't, I mean, I'll just say, not all teachers are.
Yeah.
But we aren't celebrating, you have a kid, I've had kindergarten kids that are at a three-year-old or below level in first grade. And I did them too, almost a five-year-old, but they're supposed to be a seven-year-old.
Right.
I think that's fantastic, but guess what, the way we have it, you're not doing that.
Well, that's why we need to improve tier-one instruction. That's why we need to make sure that our teachers have the supports necessary to teach multi-language learner kids, kids who are facing trauma. If you're graduating from college right now, do you know of the best instructional practices to address English language learners? No, you don't. Do you know how to work with kids who have experienced trauma? Trauma-enforced pedagogical practices, you probably don't. So as a district, we're looking at our professional development, we're looking at the resources again, we're providing teachers, we're looking at our coaching strategies to address this exact problem. So that we're not just teaching to a test, we're creating an environment where kids want to be in school, they're excited to come to class.
That's another reason you're listening.
And I'm not patting myself on the back as a teacher, but I had a kid who showed up three days before the end of the third term, okay? He's flunky, I've never seen this kid before in my life, right? What was the first thing I said to him?
Hi, where were you?
Welcome to my class, Cameron, it's so good to meet you. Don't take this quiz today, okay? Here's what I'd like you to work on, can you fill out these assignments so we can get you a passing grade before? And just raise your hand and I'll come over here and help you? Thanks so much for coming today, it was so good to see you. We're gonna get you a graduation, right? And that is the strategy and approach we need. I am so sorry, you all have more questions and I would like to be able to take more time.
Ben, I do have a 30-second question.
30 seconds?
What network is the New Deal High School gonna be in? Has it, has it been assigned a network?
We're having an argument, so...
Well, you are not.
Is there a bed? Is Chick-fil-A involved?
Uh, that is 100% positive it's gonna be in 100 networks, but that's being said.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, okay, thank you, that's all I really need.
Here's my email address. You are all welcome to email me anytime and I cannot promise you that I will respond in 20 minutes, but I promise I will respond.
He really does, I swear.
And we'll have opportunity to talk. Really, so, let's not let this be the end of the conversation, let's let this be the start of the conversation and let's make sure that we're providing the supports, we're not perfect, we're not.
Well, you never will be with you.
But we won't, but we're gonna do our best and I promise, I promise, I'm here for kids. Our board members are here for kids, Tyler is here for kids. And we're gonna provide the best support and opportunities that we can to make sure that Arcadia grows and advances, that Granger continues to grow in its graduation rate and that our kids have the resources and support that they need. And that all starts with quality tier-one instruction and making sure those kids want to be in our schools in their...
But are they gonna change them? Because all, since I've been here, they just get, okay, this program, this program, this program. And then they pile it up.
We're working on that.
It's overwhelming.
Yep.
And the teachers are all, well, why do you think so many are leaving?
Yep.
Teachers are leaving, even principals are leaving right now.
They are.
So none of them.
Yeah.
So sometimes change, but I...
And it's that culture of compliance.
Yes, what I'm saying, I know, what is, what is changing?
And I...